All rise. The Court of Attorney in County is now in session. Darrell Clark, your back.
Okay, take the floor up to go. Please, please.
We will bow this place. Heavenly Father, Lord, just want to thank you for another opportunity to stand and represent you, Lord, Father of this county, of Old County. Lord, as we meet today, Lord, Father, and we're asking, we'll get one nine, one four, Lord, Father, and do the best that we can to represent these people, Lord, Father of Old County, and best of all, represent you. We stand true and honest towards God and everything that we believe in. We ask this in your heaven, sweetest name, amen.
All right.
Praise be to the light of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, we say to the clerk, call.
Donna Savage, here. Jeff Long.
Here.
Robbie Melton, here. Darrell Clark.
Here.
Patrick McCurdy.
Here.
Lee Richards. Randall Boswell.
Here.
Gil McCowen, here. Jesse Bowman.
Here.
Roger Carr.
Here.
Geraldine Walker.
Here.
Phil Tally.
Here.
Greg Nivens.
Here.
Shane Walker.
Here.
Cindy Robbins.
Here.
How many present, please? Four present, one ask. All right. We have a war. Approve the minutes before the vague twenty twenty three county commission meeting would be motioned. Motion by Robert Melton. Second by Donna Savage. All four?
Aye.
All four. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number six. Consider approval for the following order of each school report and school budget commitments. And that's been approved by the education committee, please. Got it. Motion by Phillip to approve. Second by Cindy Robbins. Any other key questions? All four approve.
Cindy Robbins? Yes. Shane Walker?
Yes.
Greg Nivens?
Yeah, I've got a.
This is. Court.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Phil Tally?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Darrell Clark?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
All four motion carries. Number eight, consider approval for salary schedule approved by the salary election committee if your package.
You said that was seven.
I mean, seven. I'm sorry. Number seven, consider approval for the volume county budget of business. General fund one oh one, amendments three, four, five, six. Solid waste number one sixteen, amendments three, four, five, six. Drive fund number one twenty two, amendments two and three. And highway fund number one thirty four, amendment number three. That's been approved by the budget. If they had a question about that, we'll all see it in the package. Motion to approve. Motion by Donna Savage. Second by Robert Carr. Clerk called her up.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Darrell Clark?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Phil Tally?
Yes.
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Motion carries, all four. Number eight, consider approval for salary schedule twenty twenty three dash twenty twenty four approved by the salary budget. Salary schedule in your package. Is always on the package? That's all. If you have any questions, you can say it after the package is.
It isn't within the budget.
Yeah. So, anybody have a question? Not intended motion to approve by Mr. Jesse Bowman and second by Cindy Robyn. Clerk be called her up.
Excuse me. Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
Phil Tally?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Darrell Clark?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
All four. Motion carries. Number nine is where those who have worked with the county or house, having worked for the county like declare a director or his director, say that they have an apology. If you work before you vote on the budget. So, once you call your names, if you work with the county or you're not a family member working with the county, you do declare. But, so, number nine, consider approval for the volume resolution of budgets by twenty three twenty four. Number one, appropriate resolution by twenty twenty three dash zero six two six dash zero one. Resolution fixing the tax levy, number eight, twenty three dash zero six two six dash two. Nonproblem resolution number twenty three dash zero six two six dash three. Then we got the, then our individual funds, general fund one oh one. Four thousand jail bank fund one twelve. Solid waste fund one sixteen. Drive fund one twenty two. American Rescue Plan fund seven. Highway fund one thirty one. General debt service fund one fifty one. General purpose school fund one forty one. School federal projects fund one forty two. Central cafeteria fund forty three. Education debt service fund one fifty six. Capital projects fund one seventy eight. Open County Health three up center, Open County Pickle nine oh one. And general fund cash flow forecast. This has been approved by the budget committee. You all have set it on the budget. So, all the passing board doing this year. Got a motion by Phil Tally. Got a second by Robert Carr. Clerk be called her up.
Donna Savage? Indirect conflict?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
I have conflict, I work with the county. Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Darrell Clark?
I have indirect or direct conflict with the county. I work at the highway department and I was elected before they started making this office. I vote yes over the budget. Just but I don't have a direct or indirect. Do not, yes.
Okay. Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
I have an indirect conflict and I vote yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Phil Tally?
Yes.
Greg Nivens?
Yeah, I have a spouse, support for education, taking care of him. I vote yes again.
Shane Walker?
I have a direct conflict with the county for you. I'm not going to work today. So, I'm trying to get him to yes.
So, I'm trying to do it.
Yeah, direct.
Okay. Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
All, all four? All four, everybody.
Yes.
All four, motion carries, please. You need to double check to make sure. That's a good job. Now, number ten, consider approval for adding new bookkeeper positions in the county executive office. Everybody saying, cop community in the county executive office providing odd law responsibilities or purchase orders or backlog for future county purchases. This decision is needed due to the increase in number of county budget. Bookkeeper will also develop cross strain, other recruiting, recruiting that is identified in the job description. With direct guidance of budget directors, items important for our duty, bookkeeper office will be provided next to the budget director's office or through my version process. This has been approved by the salary committee and the.
Is this full time or part time?
Be a full.
Like every day, full time?
Be a full time.
Is this on a yearly basis? Are we gonna, uh, is this gonna continue?
I guess that's what, I think that was budget committee discussed. We'll come back and revisit it any year.
We can come back and revisit it any year if it doesn't work out?
Yes.
Will there be help coming? Yes.
Hourly or salary?
We got a full salary. Right.
It should be salary.
Salary. Okay, salary, we'll keep it salary. Next, Barbara, anything more? Copy that.
Um, well, we talked about it at the budget and salary committee, how the best we can do for our office. Questions were answered, others asked for our employees as well. I've talked to those people as well and told them and kind of explained our situation. We're about, well, we're not as behind now as we was, but we're still behind on getting bill pay due to the amount of POs that come into our office. It hasn't been this way just since I've taken over. It's been this way for the past few years. It's been needed since then and it's something that has, something has to happen. Something has to heal. All the employees in my office are working nights and weekends to catch up and it's not fair to them because their own salary is low. So, this is something that is very much needed.
You have a question? All right, now, plan to motion.
So, this has been going on for three years?
Three years.
Three years?
That's a motion by Rod, or Randall, uh, second by Robert Carr. Call her up.
Donna Savage? Yeah. Jeff Long?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Darrell Clark?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Phil Tally?
Yes.
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
All four. Motion carries. Number eleven, consider approval for the county to pay up to six hundred dollars health insurance per month. Effective July, November, twenty twenty three, enough to six hundred and seventeen dollars health insurance per month. Effective December twenty three through June twenty 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 four, for the county and solid waste employees. No change for the highway employees. County pays a hundred instead of individuals, a hundred instead of vehicles. But approved on salary and half budget to be, uh, folks, you know, we don't get a lot of money. Our pay's not that good at times, but we're trying to help put our real heads in, so that's what this is about, to try to make it legal. Got a motion by Jesse Bowman. I have a second by Donna Savage. Clerk call her up.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
Phil Tally?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Darrell Clark?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Thirty four, one pass. Number twelve, consider approval for sheriff's department to apply SRO grant, no match, up to seventy five thousand dollars for that program. And Lord, now, we think, got a motion by Jeff Long. I have a second by Geraldine Walker. Clerk call her up, please.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
Phil Tally?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Darrell Clark?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
All four, motion carries. Number thirteen, consider approval for the highway bids for twenty twenty three, twenty four. The packet into your list of the ones who were awarded the visitor's packet here. We took, uh, we put it out paper in front of the two weeks and we opened the bin, I think it was for twelve, none of this box. What you see in the packet is, uh, the ones who were those close there. Motion by Randy Boswell. I have a second by Cindy Robbins. Call her up.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Darrell Clark?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Phil Tally?
Yes.
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
All four, motion carries. Number fourteen, consider approval to add Ham Lane to the official road. Through the planning commission and highway and property committee. It's down in our shop area where Ham Lane is, off of the first road to the Scotty Avenue Committee, to the car shop. Got motion by Geraldine Walker. I have a second for Jeff Long. Clerk call her up.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
Phil Tally?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Darrell Clark?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
All four, motion carries. Number fifteen, consider approval to add Roxanne Sidwell as a veteran service officer for the, or judicial commissioner, oh, it's also, she's calling the service officer for the judicial commissioner for the, to replace Chris Barlow. And that's to that, uh, that program that they got, uh, the date of Chris. Uh, did it, I don't, got a motion by Donna Savage, second by Jeff Long. Is there any specific request? If not, call, uh, all four say aye.
Aye.
Those pose likewise. Motion carries. All right. Number sixteen, consider approval to add the volume growth for emergency purposes. All of these roads have been ran through, and it's been approved by highway and county property, but, uh, nine oh one has come out and said what all the new locations are, bail boxes and so forth, and these are ages that go up with emergency purposes. We will not be vague about that in the county. There, take a motion to approve. Cindy Robbins made a vote, second by Donna Savage. Voice of vote, all four?
Aye.
Oppose? All four, motion carries. Number seventeen, consider approval to add the following surplus for the, the volume. Solid waste, you've gotten some surplus, sheriff's department has some surplus, and our kind of surplus. You have a chance, look those in your package. If anybody gets any questions, I have a motion to surplus property. Got a motion by Robert Melton, second by Jeff Long. Call her up.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Darrell Clark?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Phil Tally?
Yes.
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
All four, motion carries. Number eighteen, consider approval for average service rights. Approved by the budget, second to any of the budget. We, we have to do this every year. It's something that's not uncommon for any of departments to do. They have certain load happen, so. Got a motion by Randy Boswell. I have a second by.
Can I ask a question?
Yep, we get a second, second by Robert, Robert called, dive away.
Okay, so, uh, where's the total write-off for that?
It's in your package there.
I see it right here. Totally just, you got nine years.
And those are.
Eight hundred, nine hundred.
And those are been, been trying to collect for the last three, five years. We went through several different, uh, lanes, tried to collect them, and some of them just came.
I, I read through the, through the minutes and, uh, when you should, uh, you should, is it, is that, is there any way we can prove that? That's a lot of money.
Yeah, they probably don't.
Do people pay your bills? I agree.
Well, we've got, uh, you know, we've got a clerk over there that goes through those days and identifies once you've got your name or been made, how long it's been on the books. You carry them for a certain period of time, uh, you can't collect any money from them.
It's sad because we're looking, we're looking at sniffs and animals and, you know, this is where, this is where accounting goes, goes, wipes off.
Medicare, oh, okay, Medicare, yeah.
A lot of that is, uh, so Medicare refuses to pay for transporting somebody to a doctor 's office. And so, we have to eat that. And so, a lot of those write-offs is us helping the people in our county that we can't get paid for because they're not paying Medicare, Medicaid, and they're not able to pay for sure of that. So, a lot of that is what Medicare, Medicaid refuses to pay or don't pay. So, I've been in multiple meetings of trying to get Medicare and Medicaid to pay more than forty percent of what, because it ain't fair to the public to have to pay a hundred percent, but Medicare and Medicaid only pay forty percent. So, when I got to bring legislation into white, or to the US Capitol on the way up, bringing that there, that was my main question. How can we get better funding for our healthcare providers, uh, like our local hospitals that are going under left and right, or rural hospitals because they can't get reimbursed? So, a lot of these rural hospitals are going under and our ambulance services are, are having, we're having a tough time because you're not being able, the county is having to pay a lot more than what they paid them. And a lot of that is because of the reimbursements. So, that right there, a lot of it is because of the things we can't charge for.
I, I so appreciate that. And I guess this statement should be made, that's, we tried offering these taxes, but, but it took, well, we had to write this off and there's a lot of things that everybody wants the county to do, but this has to be taken care of.
We have to take care of our people. And see, if another thing that Medicare, Medicaid won't, or like if we transfer somebody from a hospital to another hospital, Medicare and Medicaid won't go ahead for that. And that's something that's desperately needed to be done and the people refuse to pay for it, so we have to.
And you hear, so I did.
Yeah.
You know, bill or I go through, I feel, uh, more of a judge.
We had a collection of the, uh, couple of, quite a few years ago, we have something now, had them, gonna come in and they could give us fifty percent of everything they collected and nothing really materialized out of that either.
Maybe, maybe put an article in the paper so people understand. How much money do we have to write off? It's funny that we can't use the.
Well, I, I, they can show you that since Paula's been in, uh, in her office, she has brought so much more money that as, uh, before she was in office, she's been collecting. And I can't give you the exact number of how much off the top of my head, but she's been trying to, to go back for more money, so.
This ain't just one year, this is four years.
Been going on that for a while.
Was there any other, there's certain insurances, like I say, you charge X amount to do, to the hospital, whatever. Certain insurance, anybody use certain insurance, I've got, I did, there's some insurance, one is left over, I've got, I've got, it's a different type. All right, we have motion by Randy Boswell, second by Robert Carr. Any others? Clerk call her up.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
Phil Tally?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Darwin, can I add one more thing?
Go ahead.
Uh, tomorrow at two fifteen.
Marshall White.
She will be here to meet with our, uh, local officials and you can ask the very same questions.
Cause that's what she told me. All right, number nineteen, consider approval for award bids for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four volunteer fire department insurance, we have five. Insurance for one thirteen, three twenty-two, approved by the budget committee. Uh, second by, second by Cindy Robbins, and Scott. Call her over.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Caroline Walker?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Greg Gibbons?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Sidney Robbins?
Yes.
All four motion carries. You know, we ordered bids for volunteer fire departments. We did have those in our community, we had a hard time in our houses, or the temperature would be high, we had no fire protection. We try to do any questions for the county, sometimes it feel like we don't do enough, but you know, they all, about the volunteers, they're about paid. Give us a signal in the community, three tough tough things we'll, we'll serve. Uh, number twenty, consider approval for award twenty twenty-three, twenty-four to jail and seizure center food and non-food bids to hit certain homes. Approved by the budget committee, uh, second by, got motion by Randall Baldwin, second by Shane Walker. Call her over.
Sidney Robbins?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Greg Gibbons?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number twenty-one, consider approval for trustees to turn over the twenty-one property tax to the clerk master in about fifty-eight thousand. Four hundred and sixty-four dollars, approved by the insurance, the Lincoln Bank. Got motion by Robbie Melton, second by Jeff Long. Call her over please.
Sidney Robbins?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Greg Gibbons?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
All four motion carries. Number twenty-two, consider approval for fiscal strike, efficiency government fiscal confirmation, twenty-three, twenty-four. It's a three-star program, requiring approval by the budget committee, uh, second to approve that letter, we sent it back, uh, Donna Savage. Second by Robert Carr. Scott. Clerk called her.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Greg Gibbons?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Sidney Robbins?
Yes.
All four motion carries. Go page number four. Uh, number twenty-three, consider approval for resolution twenty twenty-three, tax zero six two six, tax zero five. It's a ratification of the private act, expanding jurisdiction of the county to support adoption, approved by the public safety committee. And we're doing that so we can start having local adoption, adoption here in the county. I don't have a lot of young kids, uh, we need a, uh, motion. Got a motion by Robbie Melton, second by Geraldine Walker. Clerk, we call her over.
Sidney Robbins?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Greg Gibbons?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Roger Carr? Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
All four.
Oh man, uh, sorry, uh, Judge Colson wanted me to read a letter to you guys thanking you. He was unable to be here today. I thought I picked it up off the desk to bring it in. I apologize for that. Uh, I don't have it with me, but it was a letter thanking each and every one of you guys for, uh, for allowing him to be able to do the adoptions, uh, and that he wouldn't personally have been able to be here today.
Hopefully, we have a lot of things to thank you.
He said that there was no place around here that you could do adoption, that there's crowds to do it somewhere. So, this will help a lot of people here in the county.
All right, number twenty-four, uh, consider approval to apply for three, three card grants, we're up to fifty thousand dollars, no back. Grant will be used by six through eight great shoes, different career paths, later, uh, that are, uh, approved by the budget committee. Got a motion by Sidney Robbins, second by, uh, Jeff Long. Call her over.
Sidney Robbins?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Greg Gibbons?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
All four motion carries. All right, number twenty-five, consider approval for the sheriff's department to apply for the Tennessee law enforcement trade with candy, call it share and grab, no match. Up to nine thousand dollars per employee who attended the police academy. Uh, that's a good program. Hopefully, we can get that, that's what we have to offer, so, uh, is there any questions about, got a motion by Randall Baldwin, second by Philip Tally. Somebody have a question? Call her over.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Greg Gibbons?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Sidney Robbins?
Yes.
All four motion carries. Number twenty-six, consider approval for Rocky Dowd to replace Colleen Tuck, or the E nine one one board. The term will be through March of twenty-four, approved by the budget committee. Any questions? Not on the table, uh, a motion, got a motion by Sidney Robbins, second by Donna Savage. All four?
Ah.
Any votes? One, one vote. It'll be subsequent one, uh, motion carries. Uh, this, uh, and not the other. Yes. Uh, consider approval for doctors of arts, uh, Kate, Kate, Kate Spence, Renuel, Mary Luther, Renuel, Danielle, Onto, New. Janice Toller, you, Carrie Cross, uh, you and Margaret Ann Price, Renuel. Got a motion, I said a motion by Randall Baldwin, second by Donna Savage. Randall Baldwin, wait a vote, uh, second by Donna Savage. All four?
Ah.
Any votes? All four motion carries. Number twenty-eight, Shannon, consider report to the county commission. Do we need to skip that one, please?
No.
I want to hear from you.
She, this is, are there a couple more items? Cause this is, I'm gonna be a while.
Yeah, we still got some business to check here out. Go ahead. We always, uh.
Okay, I have a whole presentation.
Pardon?
I have a whole presentation. It's gonna be a while.
How long?
I'm calling Shannon from Alaska.
Well, we, we, now, we, we're not, we're not, we're not, you know, uh, you wanna do it up there, you don't have a lot of time. You have more than most.
Well, that's what it is. But, there's a lot, I mean, I just.
We still have business to do.
Okay.
Just short for, go.
Okay. Can you, I need to call Shannon, um, I'm gonna zoom her in. She's on vacation, she rescheduled her vacation to be at this meeting that was rescheduled to today, so she couldn't be here, uh, but she wanted to be here, I'm assuming. Can we not come back to this one as you guys go through that setup? I mean.
Usually ask for a simple update, you talk for.
I, I, I thought it was working through that you were gonna be presenting our value.
Do you want pardon?
I, I, we were, we explained that we were gonna be doing a presentation of the value to, to the county and, uh, I didn't know that you thought it was gonna be a short thing.
Yeah, we were aware, uh, they've watched, been, uh, looked up in, in the last three months or something.
I understand.
Just give us a short version of all of what we.
Is there a reason I need to give a short version?
No, I just want you to.
Okay, I, I know, but because we haven't been here in three months and I sincerely apologize for that, we, we have some catching up to do. Can you, can you help me with something? Can you hand out these stacks to everyone? There's a magazine on the bottom. Can I give one to the commissioner?
But we can move to the end, and we need to, uh, protect the little.
Yeah.
The number, uh, was, blew down to number twenty-nine.
Thank you.
Number twenty-nine, Chris Farlow at the Oak County Archives was the recipient of the yard, eight, a week. Archival, uh, at that's what award by society, because the archive is named space here, three. The nomination of Chris as successful presser of historical records from the old location to the builder of the, uh, county service. Now, they wanted to acknowledge that Chris is a good guy in reality, and, uh, know that he can do that. Uh, our next county commission meeting, it's gonna be Monday, July the 20th, twenty, uh, twenty-three, at five twelve. Do we have any other?
There'll be a workshop at four thirty on that day.
So, add that to your calendar.
Oh.
Four thirty for workshop?
Yeah, we was gonna have it over there because he wanted to do a little slideshow. So, I, I sent out the email with his name, he's from, he's new to the state department, he wanted to do the commission, uh, at a workshop, so.
You talking about the twenty-two, I was thinking, go ahead.
So, where are we gonna meet at? We gonna be here, or where?
Over at, uh, Frank Martin Community, and then we'll meet back over here when.
For four. Four thirty?
He said he'd take it back one minute.
I, I would like to, uh, commend Chris on this award because it was a big undertaking to move all of those records from the archives at, uh, uh, Horse House Annex and to get them posted to, uh, the new building and, uh, in the, in, uh, working condition. Because they were in pretty bad shape and, uh, and I think, and, uh, people that we have assisted, you know, outstanding job, uh, doing that.
Lillian, do you have anything to add, to talk about real quick, before we go to the third?
Well, I just wanted to explain to everybody about the, uh, concurrent jurisdiction adoptions. The court had already approved that once, but it takes two times for a body to act, and through all where. And both of you on the budget committee, uh, were talking about the different, uh, things you could do to try to solve that problem. And passing a private act is another thing. So, if you're interested in doing that, you need to talk with the state legislators to get them to do that, pass it. And then, once they pass it, we'll pass it with the county mission. So, that's the only thing I have to add. There's some new laws, but that's kind of the thing that I'm about, so you can, if you're getting other things. If you have any questions, just let me know after this.
All right, you want to go ahead, Karen, up here, uh, Jay, what's up today? Uh, just take just a second, just to extend the invitation to everybody for the ambulance services, uh, fire workshop for the community. It's, uh, July first, and the fire ground's beginning this year, uh, so you can take out the three, we started six, uh, three, we're running this year, I want to make. And then, we started five, of course, uh, we get it dark, and, uh, don't go see anything, get in, uh, like there's three, uh, we're trying to, uh, we use up the ambulance services, just, uh, various sponsors and donations, just tell everybody they'll come up.
It's an awesome show, we're ready to go.
No action eaten on this free to pay, so you want to hand, uh, much to Karen. Got a motion by Geraldine Walker, second by Sidney Robbins. All four?
Ah.
Motion carries, we, we'll be adjourned, so, uh, if anybody's welcome to stay, uh, I didn't want to hold anybody up, uh, maybe to go, so, uh, we'll see. Free to pay, but, so, thank you all for coming.
Thank you for sitting.
Robbins and, uh, Gail started late, they got vacation vows.
Boy. This is recording, yes? Okay, like, we can have a, we can have a replay later? Yeah, okay. So, this is all being recorded and, uh, live, thanks to over to events, thank you Tyler. Uh, my name is Joe Kales, I'm the director of operations of the chamber, and you know Shannon, but she's, can I, Shannon, can you, uh, talk? Hold on, you're coming out of my, uh, coming out of my computer. Thank you for sitting around, this, uh, this is gonna be informative and fun and exciting, but let me, uh, get this. Say something again? I'm trying. No. I know, it's exciting. Say something again? Nope. All right, I'm going to, uh, can you send me the zoom link? Uh, nevermind. I'm gonna just put you on my phone, as far as, uh, voice is concerned.
Okay, well, can you dim the screen a little so that I can start seeing y'all?
Yeah. Well, I'm plugged in, so is there, is that, no?
Okay, okay. We, we can't, we can't do.
I promise. Hey Shannon, you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
All right, I got you on my phone, I'm just setting you up on the panel next to the, uh, commissioners and
Okay.
they can hear you.
Okay.
Can you start up? Just say hey.
I'm starting to make it, I just wanna make sure y'all if you can hear me.
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, first of all, thank you for allowing us to do this evening, uh, I know we've been on the agenda a couple times and we have put it off, and there were definitely good reasons for that. And I did wanna apologize for not getting before y'all before now, uh, we felt it was very important that we had a conversation with, uh, our county executive before we got in front of you guys, uh, just out of respect for him and his position. And unfortunately, we had scheduling difficulties allowing us to get in front of him and sit down and have a conversation prior to us presenting. So, that is why we missed out, uh, Darwin, I apologize for not knowing that we were doing this, but I had requested to be on the agenda for the evening. And I'm pretty sure a few of the commissioners as well as Stephen knew that we were gonna do this as well. So, I apologize that it's in the way of anything going on tonight, but it is very important that we are, uh, very transparent. You guys really want to develop a great partnership with the county, with Stephen, with the commissioners. I feel like there is so many great things going on in Upper Two County right now, that one of the most important things that the chamber can do is have a really good relationship with both municipalities and do everything in our power to do what we can to make our community a, a great place, let this work play and just do all we can to make it a better place than we can't do it alone, we have to do it together. And then, when it comes to the chamber, this is what we do. So, uh, I just wanted you to know my heart and how I feel about the work that I do, uh, I'm very, very passionate about this meeting. Um, passionate about my job, I don't even feel like as a job, uh, because I, I love what I do so much. And with your friends, and the chambers, thanks for all this evening. It's probably the best recording thing that I've done in my life, and I believe that after Joe completes his presentation, y'all will understand a little bit more about why we feel that way and about the things that we do in this community and about what they are. So, Joe, turn over to you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll just leave you over there. Okay, um, thank you so much for bearing with me through the technological problems and all my friends out there. Thanks for coming and supporting. Uh, my name is Joe Kales, director of operations of the chamber, um, I'm gonna go through an agenda, uh, introduction strategic plan that the board of the chamber has put together, membership breakdown, programming, priorities, and the optimistic future. A lot of quite discern.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Uh, the slides you have are a few, I have a lot more, um, I, I'm gonna send you all an email after this with all the assets, there's a lot of paperwork and a lot of assets, a lot of information about the county, because like Shannon said, um, there's so much exciting here, and I'm gonna go into, um, some details, just because, um, my apology is second. I appreciate this opportunity, right? So, um, to take your time, I appreciate it. I, there's fifteen of you, I'm in the fifth district, I live on East McCormick. Um, if you couldn't tell, I'm not from here, I'm, uh, I'm from Chicago, and, uh, I am the product of tourism, and, uh, and I, I wanna set a foundation of that. Um, it's unfortunate that Shannon's in Alaska for us and for her, she's loving it, but, um, the scheduling conflict, uh, wouldn't have her here, but, um, I like speaking about this stuff because I am the, I am the product of the goal of tourism and marketing in this county now. Uh, never in my life, and just a little bit impersonal from me, uh, to you, so you know me a little bit better, and I would encourage any of you to, to get, you know, to, to ask me any questions if you want, but born and raised in Chicago suburbs, very, very different life, you can imagine, I'm not gonna get into my story, um, it was, it was God moving. Um, it was, it was God moving me here 100%. We came and visited in COVID times, my dad moved to Allen's. Um, and we, uh, we're in Chicago, homeschool family, locked down, we couldn't do anything. We said, why don't you just go visit my dad? We went to Allen's, never heard of it, never, ever thought of coming to Middle Tennessee, uh, came to visit him, and almost instantly we fell in love. And there's just a sweet spirit about this place. I think if you guys, you guys know that well enough, you serve the community, you know that, that's what you're fighting for every day. But just know that, um, the people and the attitude and the spirit of this place, all of the assets in the county, all of the things are doing good things. And it's through marketing and tours. And my dad ended up here somehow, I came to visit, but because, uh, there was no entrepreneurial pulse, because there was a homeschool community, because there was lakes, because there was outdoors, because all of these things, I moved my whole family 500 miles away from everything I knew in Chicago, right? So if you can imagine the draw of this place to just move here. So, um, it's my story, but, and which is not really that important, except for the fact that the, the purpose of tourism is to promote the county so that people want to be here, so they want to do things, so they want to eat, stay, and play, right? That's all these things that we talk about, the Chamber and the county and the city working together to put on programming and events and things like that. I live right by the fairgrounds, Livingston City Lake, I, it's awesome there. Like, all these things are the goal. So I appreciate the opportunity to share because I'm so appreciative of this area. I moved here because I love it, not gonna get into that anymore. Um, I have an apology personally, I think Shannon would echo that, but I'm not gonna speak for her. Um, you mentioned that for three months we haven't been here to present, and I'm sorry for that, I truly apologize, um, scheduling conflicts, so I could lay up excuses, we don't have time for that. Um, but I would just say that, um, my apology is that I haven't reached out to y'all. There's 15 of you, and I, I've seen some of you, I've shook some of your hands, I've not taken you out to lunch, I've not taken you out to ask you what you've been here, you know, most of your lives. There's so much wisdom and there's so much cool stuff going on here, I'd love to learn from you guys, what you're working on, what you're hearing, and it's my apology to you that I'm not, I have put my olive branch out to you, but I would also invite you to come to the Chamber and ask us questions. So my apology is simply that we aren't communicating better. There's so much good stuff going on in the Chamber, um, and in the county specifically. Everything I'm gonna present here is largely the county related, because this is a county meeting. Um, our team, Shannon, obviously, you all know Shannon Cantrell, she's been the Chamber Director for three or four years now. Um, she's absolutely amazing. Uh, she allowed me to, as a Chamber member, come and use some office space, um, in the Chamber. One thing led to another, I ended up helping her out a lot, and then we got improved for me to be paid, so I have joined the team as well. So it's me and Shannon as the two members of the Chamber representing 360 active members. Now, the average, uh, I polled all the Chamber Directors in Tennessee, there's a Facebook group, and everyone pretty much says 200 Chamber members per, per employee. So at almost 400 members, we have two people, and we're growing past that, I'll get into that, but our team is me and Shannon right now. Um, we have a support system. If you see, there's people in the stands here, and I'm so thankful for all you, these are Chamber members, these are Board members, these are Executive Board members, um, and I'm thankful for all your support, for the business owners of the businesses in Overton County, uh, all the tourism assets, all of the things. We couldn't do it without the support system of the business owners, of the Commissioners, of the Board reps, of every Board, of the schools and everything else. I'm just so thankful that we have partnerships, um, that we can communicate what we're doing with each other so that we can make each other better, right? So that's the support system that I absolutely don't want to forget, uh, because without that, me and Shannon can't do what we do. The ideal relationship, we are the Chamber, this is the county, there's the City of Livingston, Mary Hayes is here, um, we have two mayors and we have the Chamber. I, I look at it as a triangle. If we're all working together, that triangle's intact. But if we're not talking to each other, like, we have not been talking to you guys about what we're doing, um, the, things get lost, opportunities get missed, people have misconceptions, people don't know what's going on. There's so many good things going on in the county, if you all aren't aware of them, uh, outside of your district maybe, or whatever, um, I take it upon myself and Shannon that we have not communicated that well enough yet, but, uh, between the City, the county, and the Chamber, we should be working hand in hand, talking about what's exciting, drawing people here. I know, drawing people, you know, Yankees from Chicago, it's, uh, it's, it's happening, but, um, I came here because I love this place, because I'm a Southerner in heart, and that's what I'm seeing in real estate. A lot of people are coming from other states, you all see it, you know that people are coming from other states. Housing prices are crazy, locals can't buy them, blah, blah, blah. So people are coming to this place from somewhere else, but they need something to be drawn to, to move to the upper common. And I'm just telling you, like, the suburb I was from was twice the size of Overton County, and I was one of 100 suburbs in Chicagoland, if that gives you perspective. So, big old world out there, we moved here to slow down, to enjoy the nature, enjoy the lakes, enjoy the, everything that's going on here. One shot down the road to Nashville, one shot down the road to Knoxville, Chattanooga. Promoting those assets is important, right? So that's the ideal relationship, us three working together, communicating well, and just doing good things in the community. Um, our reality is, with the county is concerned, uh, we get money funds for, and I, I looked through the packet, I couldn't find, if somebody could help me, what the Chamber is getting in the, in the budget later, just tell me. Um, as far as I understand it, this is something that I found out, and Shannon kinda knew it, but as we've researched this presentation, uh, we found that the hotel motel occupancy tax funds are allotted 100% towards marketing and tourism, um, efforts, and that is the money that funds the Chamber. So I didn't know that, I learned it, and I learned that $74,100, it's actually $28.80, but around it up, uh, is, came in in 2022. Thank you. Uh, so that's 122% of the previous year, so as anyone can imagine, uh, short-term rentals are growing, right? So that tax revenue directly impacts the Chamber, and what the Chamber does directly impacts our county. So I just, I'm gonna make it pretty clear that what the county, what the Chamber is doing is building the county and growing the county and, and drawing people in here, uh, but that fund is used to fund the Chamber. So when I saw that number, and I saw a request for the budget this year, I thought it would be no problem, $74,000 came in, we didn't ask for that much, um, so that's, that's our reality. Uh, last year, this fiscal year ending like tomorrow, or in two days, three days, something, um, we were approved for $21,000, $15,000 in marketing spend, and a prorated amount of 7, $11,000 to contribute to my new salary. And that was agreed to, um, and then, I'm not even gonna say that, but, um, about what happens next year, um, so there was a $20,000 total amount that was talked about, but we got a prorate amount of 11. So we got $47,000 from the county, as far as I understand. Um, I didn't check the, the P and L over there, but, uh, there's a lot of words on that. But that's what we got this past fiscal year. So we requested $56,000, we came before the Budget Committee, it seems like forever ago now, several months ago. Um, $21,000 in dues is what we asked for, $15,000 for marketing, same amount, and the $20,000 to apply for staff that is used, staff that is used for tourism purposes, right? So $56,000 was our request, that's our reality, that's what we asked the county for, um, and that's just, that's not all the revenue that we bring in as a Chamber. Obviously, there's dues and there's sponsorships and things like that. Um, but as far as the county is concerned, that was the donation that we asked for, and that's our reality as far as it goes to the county. So my entire goal is to just explain to you guys that we're doing amazing things for the county, and it's worthwhile to put that money into the Chamber, because a lot of people don't know what the Chamber does, they think it's, uh, someone said the Chamber is stupid. Uh, I'm gonna use that as a, as a quote in some of my marketing materials, can be awesome. Uh, but people just don't know what they don't know, so I'm gonna explain some of it. We have a strategic plan that was put together by the Board. I, Shannon, I don't know if you can hear me, or if you can tell me when the strategic plan was put in place.
I'm talking to you just fine.
When was that strategic plan created? Alright, it goes a couple years ago, uh, but it goes through 2025, and it outlines these five things. This is the strategic plan of the Chamber of Commerce, which fuels tourism and marketing in Overton County. So, a very high-level summary of all that. Chamber membership and member engagement, so getting more members, retaining the ones we have, and getting the ones we do have to participate more. Thank you all for coming, you're participating very well. Um, Chamber organizational development, and, uh, Lori Burnett and Shannon have been working on that, uh, bylaws and all the, all the organizational development stuff. Support recruitment of desired new business, that's industrial development, that's economic development. Shannon was just, um, graduated her economic development certificate. Good job, Shannon. Uh, super proud of her for that, and just allows her to be better at her job. She didn't have to do that, but it was just something that she chose to do to step up her game and be an economic developer officially. Um, and that's the third strategic plan, uh, point. Programming events, targeted group development. Those, that's almost like two on its own. Pro, programming and events, y'all know, following Christmas in the country, the parade, we have a new residence party, all of those events are hosted by the Chamber, um, Live in Livingston and, um, and the Pioneer Days, so being, uh, our, uh, city events that we work together with them on. Uh, so that's programming and events, plus a bunch of other stuff, I'll get into targeted group development, uh, get into funding and financial responsibility. Obviously, we have to make money, uh, make more than the budget's expenditures and be responsible. Those are the five goals of the strategic plan of the Chamber of Commerce, which serves Overton County. So, that's a very high-level overview. Now, um, we have a, uh, I was brought on to create this ambassador team. If anyone's familiar, in Putnam County they have one, but 100 or 400 members is a lot to take care of, a lot of voices to hear, a lot of requests to fulfill, a lot of administrative burden. Uh, so the idea is that you create an ambassador team of members, of the memberships, so we form our members, if we can get 12 or 20 of them to represent a pack of 20 of them each, we can spread the wealth, right? So it's not all Shannon, it's not all me, it's not all one or two people, it's a group of 10 or 12 or 15 people, and we create that ambassador team to, um, to help the membership, to help them, ask them questions of how can I help you in your business, what do you need? Do you need help hiring? Uh, do you need help with marketing? And we can connect them to resources, we can do some things, but we can connect them to resources to help their businesses. The business pulse in this town and this county is absolutely amazing, um, there's some excitement, and, uh, that's what we try to do with the Membership Committee. What? Uh, okay. We have about 360 active members as of this moment. Uh, there was a question asked at the Budget Meeting about attrition, I have a slide on that, it's near packet, but I'll talk about the reason that people leave the Chamber, and our attrition rate is less than 10%. We are retaining more than 90% of our members on a regular basis. Uh, we have about two ribbon cuttings a month, you probably see them on Facebook Live, be friends with the business owners that are excitedly opening their businesses, we bring out the big scissors, it's a big old time, and, uh, we have about two ribbon cuttings and grand openings per month, which is really, really good, right? Um, it's, it's kinda the pulse of our, our organization. Um, when I'm at church, I'm excited about baptisms and how many people are giving their lives away, but ribbon cuttings is kinda like committing to this community, you're opening your business, and you want to celebrate. So two per month is pretty awesome to us, um, less than 10% attrition rate, um, and that attrition rate is due to, uh, 23 of, half the members, uh, just went out of business. It's, that's the economy, recession, COVID, all this stuff, right? If it's a physical location, go out of business. 16 dropped their membership, those are the people that didn't find value in the Chamber, and I take personal responsibility for that. That's what I want the ambassador team in place for, so that we can help them to, to use the benefits of their Chamber membership. Um, so I have a goal to not have anyone drop ever, uh, have 100% retention, obviously not possible, but that's the goal. Um, four, uh, business owners unfortunately died, and two moved out of state. So out of the 45 that we've lost in the last year or two, it's been two years that we've lost that, that's the breakdown.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I make a comment real quick?
Absolutely.
You said that the 16 people dropped that dropped did not seem about you in the Chamber. I look at it a little differently. Uh, they didn't think about you in the Chamber because they didn't use their member benefits and their advantage, but most of the time, if somebody drops, it's gonna be because they're not using their benefits.
That's it, yeah.
That's the way I look at it.
Yeah, absolutely. It's, it's a give-taker, it's a two-way street, right? So we, as the Chamber, we provide benefits, we have a, a stack of papers that we can show you all the benefits, and I'm gonna send it to you afterwards. Uh, we revised it, the Prospect Pack and the new member pack, it has all of that lined up. But if you don't come to the events, if you don't plug in, if you don't come to the ribbon cutting, if you don't tell me what you need in your business, there's no way that we can help, just like anything, that's how business works. Um, so I'm not super upset about people dropping their membership, it's, we've got plenty of other, we have about 400, almost 400 members, and the last list I had of total businesses in Overton County was about 800. Do you know, do you have any clue? Okay, it's about 800 total, so we've got a big field, and a lot of them are just, you know, um, direct sales businesses, they're not actual businesses, they're just salespeople or something, but, um, there's a lot more for the taking, uh, above and beyond the 400, not to mention neighboring counties and, you know, things like that. So that's the attrition, uh, you guys asked about the Budget Meeting, so I just wanted to talk about why people are leaving the Chamber, those are the reasons. We have an opportunity for prospective members, um, I drive around town and I see trucks with names on them that aren't Chamber members all the time. Uh, I have a background in marketing, I didn't, we didn't go into the whole thing about standardized credentials and all that, um, I'll spare you the, spare the detail, but I'm a marketer first, right? I, I, I see things through a marketing lens, and I'm excited about it. So when I see someone driving down the road that's not a Chamber member, and I see their phone number in their truck, or an email address, I want to send them information about the Chamber. So I'm, I'm instituting a lot of marketing stuff, automation, and information that we can promote the Chamber, which promotes the county, to all of these business owners, that they can plug in and be part of our, uh, Chamber membership. So that's, um, I, I don't expect anyone to be as excited as I am about it, because I know what it's gonna look like, but we're gonna, we're gonna skyrocket our membership, uh, pretty quickly. Um, I tell Shannon that all the time, and she's like, you know, every time something happens, she's like, oh my gosh! And, but, I, I say that humble, I'm, I'm sorry, that sounded like really bragadocious, but, um, I'm really good at what I do, marketing is my first love, and, uh, and I'm excited to get other members, uh, plugged in the community, so don't take that as bragging, I just, I want more people to be plugged in, because I want more businesses to succeed at a higher level, and we have resources that can help them, that's my heart. It's not about money, it's not about profit, it's not about Shannon and I jobs, like, it's not about any of that, it's about creating a community of business ownership where people are thriving, and they have somewhere to go to answer, get their questions answered, right? So that's what, that's what I feel the Chamber is. 400 non-members, uh, plus neighboring counties, there's, there's a lot of opportunity. Organization, organizational development, uh, Shannon can speak about that another time, support and recruitment of desired businesses, like I said, programming and events, these are the five committees that we created, so one of the goals of the strategic plan was to create five committees, and Shannon did that with the Board. Uh, I think that was right before I joined, uh, but we have a Membership Committee, Events, Finance, which I am part of, um, Marketing and Tourism, and Industrial Development. So those are the five committees to spread the load of all the administrative burden that, I mean, we could have a full-time events person, marketing person, salesperson, ops person, there's so many roles that we could have at the Chamber, but we juggle them, and we rely on these committees to help us out to spread the load, and the ambassador team as well, so.
Thank you.
Yes?
Uh, real quick, um, I wanted to invite the Commissioners, if there's any interested in being on any of those committees, please let us know. Bill Entali is a, uh, committee member on our membership, uh, committee, so we're happy to have him, uh, have him on board there, so if there's any of you that would like to join one of the other committees, please feel free to do so. Connie is actually a member on our, uh, on the tourism, and, uh, we want you to be involved. And, uh, we want you to know that we, that we invite you to be involved, so if there's anything that you're interested in, please let us know.
Yeah, and, uh, just, just presenting this and inviting some people here today, uh, we've gotten in touch with so many more people, we're talking to the school system, we want to talk to you guys, we want to have a communication, we want to know what's going on, because y'all have the pulse of the people in the districts, and, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take it upon myself to reach out to you guys and make sure that I know what's going on from your, your side of the world in each of your districts, but we're gonna do a better job about that. But, those are, that's the strategic plan. Um, programming, I'm just gonna go over this, uh, we have a new Events Committee, um, these are the existing Chamber events that you know and love, uh, summer movie series, uh, new residence party, following Christmas in the country, Christmas parade, semi-annual luncheon, business after hours, Chamber Coffee, and then Asterix, these are city events that we work with them on, Live in Livingston, which is Summer Fest this year, and Pioneer Days. So lots of, um, amazing events, but we have data, uh, that shows where people are coming from to these events. We, we can read cell phones, I guess, is what they do, they, they, we have data on how many cell phones were any given in there, that's how you tell about a concert or something like that, and people are coming from all over the place to these events. And this is done largely, uh, quite based on the effort of the Chamber and the City working together to host these amazing events. So if you know and love any of these things, um, that's, it's kind of our billboard for this community, that people should be part of it because all of these things are awesome, you can plug in, and, uh, these are the existing events. We have additional opportunities with additional new Chamber members, new businesses, we have, uh, if anyone's seen a concert at the Old Gray, that's in Overton County, that's amazing, Little, Little Red Orchard is, um, very, very excited to help, uh, grow things and do, do events, host events, and the Business Expo and things like that, Waterloo Events, Billbury's Crossing, Cub, Cub Omni TV, Captain Jim Fishing Tours, Standing Snow State Park, TCAT, Vol State, uh, Livingston Hospital, Overton County Schools, High Health Partnership, all of these people have expressed an interest to do something, to, to facilitate activities and events, and just do more things to just, uh, raise the star of this area. Um, so we're, we're actively talking to all of these people to do more events and more cool things, to make people want to stay here and come here. Um, so as far as programming is concerned, there is absolutely no shortage of opportunity, and there's willing participants, and people that are excited about this stuff, and, uh, we couldn't be more pleased about it. Um, we have workshops that we, uh, we host at the Chamber, uh, Chamber 101, if anyone's ever been to it, uh, it's just explained. It's just explained what the chamber is and what it isn't. We have member lunch and learns, if any chamber member of the three sixty has a skill, has a trade, has some sort of knowledge that they can impose upon the community, we're what, we would love to have them to talk about operations, finances, sales, hiring, firing, whatever it is that you want to teach about, if you do in your business, you can come and do a lunch and learn. We have a Google Grow Partnership, which is the technology stuff. I could use that because I don't know how to make the sound work. State Agency Partnership, we are working with the state of Tennessee as well. Ashley DeRosa over there, it's been a great help. We've got all kinds of tourism stuff going on with them at the state level and then the county and then the city and then the chamber. So, there's multiple tiers of partnership and workshops that we have. Leadership Overton, Highlands Partnership, Biz Foundry Entrepreneur Center. So, I'm going to talk about coworking in a second, but that's the coworking center in Cookeville, McMinnville, Sparta right now. And that's that. Here's our priorities. This is the, the last slide. We can go into any of these things for great length, I promise you. We can, we'll buy dinner, we'll have a good time, we can talk about any of them specifically if you have questions, comments, if you want to plug in, if you want to help us and, and all that, but as far as I'm concerned, and I threw this in front of Shannon and she didn't say no, so these are our priorities moving forward, just as I see them because I'm, I'm an efficiency guy, I like seeing, you know, where there's opportunity. Administrative efficiency, we switch CRMs, we switch email systems, we put our finances in QuickBooks, things like that and growing the team. We are almost at a point where, we are at a point, I believe, that we need another person on staff, a full-time admin. We have people through the career centers business that place people and TCAT has been giving us interns and it's, it's good to get volunteer labor, but we really need to grow the team and a part of our budget is to grow with another person. So, that's Team Broke, Economic Industrial Development. There's all kinds of opportunity, businesses wanting to come here. Tennessee is a very tax-friendly state, businesses and manufacturing want to be here. We have to work with the county and the city on those things, just to promote why someone would want to come here and for the local businesses why they should be excited about being here. So, that's Economic Industrial Development. Shannon could go on for days about that, that's her, that's her lane.
I'm not.
Okay, she won't.
Thank you. I'll, I'll, I won't do that.
Yeah, so...
You're welcome. I'll be happy to make any time. Anytime, I invite you over when the doors open, please, and we can sit down and discuss whatever you'd like.
Yeah, and then financial strength, it's fiscal, it's budget time obviously, so retaining members, growing members, finding more opportunities for sponsorships, doing fundraising events, all of these things, keeping the books clean, that's one of my strengths as well, so I'm excited, I'm really excited about doing that. Advertising, marketing opportunities, there's so much opportunity to get out there with social and video and things like highlighting the assets of this community, hosting more events that inspire. I, I just love all the cool businesses that are in the area of things that we can do that drew a person like me who would never move here in a million years, that has fallen in love with this place. I'm actually going back home in two days and I, home, this is my home. I'm going back to Illinois in two days and I'm dreading it. I don't want to go back home because this is home, but it was because of events and the people and the spirit, like I said, so a lot of that has to do with this. Work Base is the name of the coworking entrepreneur center. This is going to be anticlimactic because I don't know if the video is going to have sound. Let's see how that works.
The benefits of coworking have become even more apparent. The distraction sense of working from home can really limit your productivity with all the benefits of a traditional office, but more flexibility and access to community and collaboration. Coworking at the Biz Foundry offers all that and more. With locations in Cookeville, McMinnville and Sparta, there is sure to be a location nearby. Month-to-month subscriptions start at thirty-nine dollars a month and offer a variety of levels based on your needs. For more information, visit thebizfoundry.org.
Anyone been to Biz Foundry ever? All right. Go ahead.
With the remote working on the rise...
Just kidding. There we go. All right, thank you for bearing with me on that three-minute promo video. Apparently nobody in this room has been to the Biz Foundry, but yeah. The Chamber of Commerce is a resource center for business owners and coworking is a place where you can collaborate, you can come and, I mastermind and talk about plans. I've had this dream for a while and bringing the business owners together, someone who might not have an office, that doesn't want to buy an office, rent an office, that can have their own private space, they can come into collaborative environment, have some coffee, make some, print some copies, but really talk to other entrepreneurs, have a, we have, there's an entrepreneur center part of it as well. So, it's a place where you can come have an office space that's very cheap, very affordable and the Biz Foundry in Cookeville has a waiting list as far as I, they told me a week or two, about sixteen people on a waiting list in Cookeville. So, there's demand outside of Cookeville, McMinnville, Sparta. Livingston is, and there's so many business owners, there is so much excitement about business ownership. If you look at the county or on the square and the Biz Foundry, there's going to be a location here in Livingston that can cater to and provide resources for above and beyond the chamber and will work together. I'm going to go and manage that location and have a collaborative environment where business owners can come and ask questions. If you don't know how to run the books in your company, come over to us and we'll help you out. There's someone there that can either do it for you or explain how to do it. So, that's what I'm excited about. It's going to be a revenue driver for us, it will be profitable, there's whole financial, there's financials on it. To answer your question, we have grant money lined up. We, the state of Tennessee, well, USDA gave us a grant. The state of Tennessee has an ECD Place Makers Grant for entrepreneurs, for, for coworking spaces. We're going to have about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in grant money from the, from the US government, state of Tennessee. TBA has a program as well and TCAT is a partner and they have a building and construction team and they're going to provide the labor because their students need hours. So, it's a really, really good partnership there with TCAT. We're just so, we're so thankful for you guys. So, between the grant money to pay for materials and construction and the furnishings and all the stuff, the programming and the door locks, it's all been done three times by the Biz Foundry already. Jeff Brown, if anyone knows him, Tommy Lee, he worked with those guys all the time at the, at the, in Putnam County and all that stuff, but there's so many partnerships available from the Biz Foundry that are going to benefit the business owners of this community, which will increase the allure and increase the revenue of this county. It's going to be another hub of a place where you can rent a space, come and hang out, mastermind, talk about your business and that's what we're excited about. So, growing revenues, maintain revenues, make the people happy, getting plugged in and talking to you guys more often is, is our, is our goal.
Probably y'all been working on that, though.
This?
Yeah.
I mean, I've been dreaming about five for about ten years. We started the USDA grant about six months ago.
How long y'all been talking about here?
In Livingston?
Yeah, how long y'all been...
About six months.
Six months? Yeah, that's something we, we should have known about, first I say.
I, I apologize, that's, that's a hundred percent my fault, my fault.
I want to make all the business open here and everything to do for, kind of, Livingston. My, my thing, and I always, my thing, I, I expect the chamber to be involved in the degree war. Factory denture come here and house diplomas for our employees, for our people, you know, that's, that's been my big thing. I think, I sound like a bad idea, but, you know, idea that anybody thinks about going on.
Sure.
Nobody's coming to anything to us. Is anybody wishing you about this? Y'all seen this before?
I, I do have one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Audience, there's a deck, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but before he says the tourism money goes to the chamber, I believe you need to go back to, to reverse that, it does not go to the chamber. Am I right? I'm right, I'm right?
Yes.
I said, he said the money from tourism, all the money comes in, it's supposed to go to the chamber. Billy and Anna agree with me, no, it does not.
It's all very clear, it's a county, it's a county that can...
Tourism, tourism, marketing and tourism. Where?
The county wants to get the chamber or, 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 uh, money, they can do some out of the money, but the money, the statute's very clear.
And the county can use all their own tourism.
Yes.
So, we can do our own. So, you need to rephrase your remark on that and let the people here know it does not go to the chamber.
If I said that, then it's not what I meant. I can see dollars need to go towards marketing and tourism related activities and I, all I was saying, and all I was saying was that historically that has been the chamber mess. So, sorry if I misled anybody, but I'm not, I, I would love to know what other marketing tourism efforts are being made at the county level, but that's all.
So, I have one more question. You know, you're talking about, everything goes on. I go to Christmas parades all over, that's limited, it's the only one you have to pay again.
Okay.
And then you say, you know, that it's, why do, why do people have to pay the vendor, Christmas parade levity and go to Bucky and Danny vendors, play anywhere.
Yeah. Do you know how long it's been to, to pay for those? Forever?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, nobody's ever asked us to not charge, so, that I'm working, Shannon?
Not going to answer that question. Uh, when I started, it, that, it just, that was, that's how I, I hate saying this, but I wanted to, because it's really the only parade I could use. That, that is what they told me to do and that is what we did. The reason for that though was mainly to cover, uh, we have to pay, and this is called income, we have to pay for the awards. There are a few things on the agenda that we do have to pay for. Now, I will say this, if we were to get more sponsorship for the Christmas parade, rather than, you know, if we got enough to cover those things, so we could watch, we're not out to make money for the Christmas parade, we don't make money on the Christmas parade at all. It, you, usually we end up having to spend more to do what we do for the parade. So, if, um, if we have more sponsorship to cover some of that stuff, then we would not have to charge. So, you know, it, it, it's not, it's not that we can look at in the future, uh, just when the Christmas parade committee gets back together, we can develop an agenda and do the same thing. I don't know if we're all doing that.
Yeah, we, we, it's five dollars per entry, we don't really get a lot of money from it, so, but we definitely, nobody's ever said that, so, that's fair.
You know, you were, you were allowing us to put the chamber funding, you not.
Yeah.
All the other, all the other counties, they have to pay, they have to pay for their money.
Sure. It's good to know, I didn't, I've not been to another one.
And, and, and another thing, you know, I think the chamber should go to Hanging Lamb and the Horse Arena out there, Recreation Center, there's never been nothing about that or the Redwood Saddle Club, the one they have at Lowland, Empire. Events that goes on in the county, that people don't know about, I mean, they have, they have a great thing going on in Hanging Lamb.
Great.
I've been a part of it all my life. Jesse here has his too.
Yeah, I'd love to sit and talk.
Jesse, he's great, what he's doing out there. He's doing a great job and has, has a lot of events and never hear him just mention.
Okay, that's good enough, I appreciate you pointing that out. And if there's anything else, I, I'm all here, I love hearing this stuff and more opportunities to do things as resources allow, obviously.
We know about these things, though. I mean, it, it really helps if we know about them.
Well, like he said, the, the events on Facebook, it's on Facebook all the time on all three of those places that I mentioned.
Well, unfortunately, I don't always see everything on Facebook because of their algorithms. I, I don't always see them, so...
Well, we, I just, I just emailed the school system and asked them for all their events. I, I'll get an email, you guys some follow-up material as well and I'll ask you, if you, if you know things like that, just reply back and tell us because we don't know everything that's going on all over the place and we really would love to know. You guys are the pulse of your district, right? So, you know those things, I've not been up there. So, if you guys don't tell us, then we can't do anything, but we would love to participate in that. I would, I'd...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
There's a few things that I really would like to touch on that Joe did and, and I'm going to keep it as supportive as possible, but it's very important. I mean, because, uh, you know, maybe, there are a lot of developments in the chamber that Joe probably doesn't realize at times, but it's just something that comes automatic for me that I, that I do for certain things, but, you know, we work out with the school system and work for development. We work with our industry when it comes to retention and expansion. I mean, there's been many meetings we had over the last year, especially with different industries and counties that we have helped to put some, some questions that are written where they are hired for employees or, you know, wanting to know about, uh, certain, you know, business, and certain names and all that, along with, uh, small business development. And, uh, there's a lot of things going on with the school system, of course, next year that they're going to be involved in, it's going to be really exciting. One of them was the Great Star brand that, uh, you know, the great today, so I'm really appreciative of that. We've got a lot of stuff going on with the tourism department and, uh, there's a lot of great things coming out for our tourism asset fund in the county, where we're going to be at, never before. We'll have a great video for you guys in the very near future. We got a, um, we got a, a grant through the tourism department where they hired somebody and I was a professional videographer, talking to companies, companies, the video, you know, talking to the assets for us. So, we've got a lot of really good things happening and, uh, across the board and we just, we want to be able to, you know, keep you guys informed of what's going on with us and I just would really want you all to keep up to date with what's going on in the district. We've got a new vendor.
I'll follow up with you guys and, and ask those questions about what else is going on, if we're missing, that's, that's, I felt a burden about that, that we haven't done that, so, yeah. You'll be hearing more from us, but I appreciate your time. It's, I know you guys stuck around and it does not, I don't take that lightly and thank you all for coming out to, to hear about that. These are chamber members and board members that are supporting the chamber, yes?
TCAT commissioner is a member of the chamber.
TCAT commissioner is a member of the chamber.
Yes.
So, we could be interested in...
That's, that's, that's the benefit of the funding that I was...
School, we have a board member.
You asked a question, Darwin, about the biz, about the biz. It was mentioned, was it not, Patrick? Because you spoke about that.
Yeah, you were at that too, wasn't you?
At a budget meeting, maybe, it was mentioned.
About, what did you say?
There's...
Yeah, but it's coming here to, um, church, but...
What, as a group? I mean, we've never heard that.
No, no, no.
In which, that looks like a good way. Well, I mean, Greg Dawson back there, we've worked with him for years, he knows, kind of how the county tends to think. We think about creating jobs, we think about our kids having a job when they graduate. We think about how we're going to keep our taxes down one another to, till they'll...